Good afternoon. I now open the City of Norwood Planning Commission for October 4th. It's time is now 3:32. Mrs. Towne, would you please call the roll?
Chairman Powers.
Present.
Mayor Schneider. Mrs. Sickinger.
Present.
Mr. Hockney.
Present.
Mr. Suer.
Present.
Moving on to Item B, Approval of the Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a mission note for agenda.
Do I have a second?
Could I make a comment first? Maybe it's that correct? Should it be approval of the minutes of September 6th?
Mine says September 6th.
This is approval of the agenda for today.
Yeah, but does the agenda say August 2nd instead of September 6th? This is question.
Mine says I move that the October 4th, 2023 Agenda of Norwood Planning Commission.
That's the first one, yes.
Yeah, the first one's fine. Yes.
But the next one.
Yes, you are correct. The.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
The approval of the minutes. The approval of the minutes should be amended. No, no, you brought that up at the correct.
That's correct. It should be amended.
So we will amend Item C, Approval of Minutes to September 6th, 2023. You pointed that out correctly. I just did not follow along. Any other amendments to the agenda? Mrs. Sickinger, would you like to amend your motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Towne, would you please call the roll?
Chairman Powers.
Yes.
Mrs. Sickinger.
Yes.
Mr. Hockney.
Yes.
Mr. Suer.
Yes.
Item C, Approval of the Minutes of September 6th, 2023. Do I have a motion to approve our minutes?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Towne, would you please call the roll?
Chairman Powers.
Yes.
Mrs. Sickinger.
Yes.
Mr. Hockney.
Yes.
Mr. Suer.
Yes.
Moving on to Item D, New Business. We have no new business scheduled. Would any of the commissioners like to offer any new business items? Hearing none. We'll move on to Item E, Old Business. Review of Proposed Ordinance Language Amending Part 11 Planning and Zoning Code relating to short-term residential rentals, lodging businesses. Mr. Skelly, would you please give us an overview of what you have prepared?
Sure. Good afternoon, Commissioners. So at the last meeting, the group asked that I look into and potentially draft up some policies as it relates to short-term rentals. I think there was some very general discussion about the planning commission's feeling about these things. So again, I apologize maybe in advance. I think it was maybe intended that we have a steering committee of some sort created to look at this. So it was just the ability of getting people organized for that meeting and then looking at what were kind of their relevant issues. So what you see in front of you this afternoon is a five-page document. It's dated September the 22nd, and what it does is it looks at the zoning ordinance with regards to the current zones that we have and try to find a balance as to where short-term rentals should be ideally permitted and where they should not, and if so, in terms of how should be better regulated. So as you go through the document, you'll see there will be now a new definition for short-term rentals. There will be a new chart looking at which zones it'll either be prohibited or permitted or as a conditional use. And then when you go through the third page, you'll actually see the various criteria that the VZA would look in making a determination on the appropriate location or not, these things. So that's about it in terms of what at least I was recommending. I did have a discussion with NOAA about this, and you know, my hope is that at least I captured some of the concerns from the planning commission. If not, you know, please indicate how can I improve it? And where do you think, you know, you can either emphasize certain things or if I went too far or whatever. So at this point, it's a, you know, for discussion purposes, not only just to figure out as to where the planning commission believes we should kind of put our eggs in which basket. So that's about it.
Thank you, Mr. Skelly. Questions for Mr. Skelly?
I did. Would it be appropriate if I'd ask if he could explain for people listening, the short-term rentals are 1 through 3, what those are, what his suggestion is?
I believe she's referring to the chart in Section 4. If you would explain that for us.
Sure. So under Section 4, which is on Page 2, there's a chart indicating our current zones that we have in the ordinance. So right now, we have four residential zones, R1, R2, R3, and then RMX zone. And as you proceed, so essentially the R1 is primarily neighborhoods that are intended for strictly single-family, and hence the R1. R2 would be for single and two-family, be it semi-detached or duplex. And then as you move towards R3, you get into the multifamily. Now, up until October of '22, we had in our zoning ordinance under the R3 and multifamily district, the provision for multifamily hotels, boarding and lodging houses. And during that time period, or up until then, the town, or sorry, the city would look at these requests. And my understanding is that since we recognize lodging homes, the short-term rentals were akin to that. So the building department would entertain a request for a change in use or whatever, look at that, and deem if it was appropriate or not, and then it would also go through obviously the building process. So as it stands now, post-October 22nd, we have provisions removing at least that. And what this ordinance does is further, there was a drafting error on my part, leaving kind of lodging motels in there. That'll be deleted. And then it'll be intended that across the board, lodging of any sort in the R1, R2, R3, and RMX will be completely deleted. Where short-term rentals will be permitted would be in the four commercial zones. And then with regards to the two industrial zones, they would be considered potentially as part of the PUD development.
Thank you.
Additional questions?
Sure. Under Item, Section 2, just help me out. Mike, when you say advertise for let, is that a legal term that I'm not familiar with?
Um, I don't know if it's a legal term. I've just seen that sometimes in various descriptors. So we have a distinguished, is this a mod rep? So you could probably see if he's ever seen that for any sort of documents when you're describing either rent or leasehold arrangements.
I think that sometimes used in leasehold situations, but I'm glad to hear.
I just, I'm curious. I.
I can go find that.
No, no, no. I'm fine. I just, then on the last, the last part of that section, under the definition, it just, or the event, the last phrase, or the availability of a property maintenance personnel with an office in Hamilton County. It just seems like a very broad out. In other words, you're very tight, then all of a sudden, and if you got access to a maintenance person somewhere in Hamilton County.
You are correct. I took the kitchen sink approach for that, and that's why it's highlighted because, you know, I was seeking direction. Now, the approach I used for the legal definition is to cast a very wide net. And that essentially in doing so will include everything. And then as you work towards the criteria on the next page, when the VZA is going through it, it'll be up to their discretion what arrangement would make most sense. So I think there's a belief where if there is an owner occupied, that would be almost the gold standard. That would be the ideal oversight and protection. The second, if it's a long-term tenant that has authorization or approval from the owner, that's the next best thing. But I've seen sometimes, and especially when you have rental ordinance registries or whatever, there is sometimes a revise of saying, hey, I'm an out-of-town investor. I don't have anyone, but I know someone who's just down the street or whatever. And you sometimes you see X amount of miles being an appropriate radius. So really, in looking at it, I didn't want to get into, well, why did you pick 10 miles? Or why did you pick it and justify, okay, well, it takes X amount of time to travel in the car, blah, 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 you know? So I just used Hamilton County saying we are located within, you know.
Just one voice. It just seems like you're very tight, and then all of a sudden, you just let it go and say anybody who can claim to be a maintenance person.
Correct. And then essentially.
And you know, that's so broad. I mean, anybody that can put a cover plate on a receptacle can be a maintenance person.
Correct. So again, I'm not going to debate that. It was more just either through direction from the planning commission or law department. And again, they haven't, you know, reviewed this or vetted this or provided kind of written feedback. So I figured at this point, by highlighting, I wanted to draw at least my attention or questions to it or further direction.
Well, that's good. And that's the reason I brought it up. It just seemed like you worked very hard to tighten it and then you loosened it up. So I have another question over on criteria, and then I will back off so the other members can. On Page 3, underneath A, under 115801 criteria, maybe I'm just not following this. STR, Short-Term Rental shall be secondary to the principal use of an existing two-family dwelling. Is that, is that really right?
It's difficult because you're saying how can, you know, you have it. But I'm trying to provide, I guess, the contextual argument saying, in terms of if you would do the math, so to speak, you have a two-family. Well, if one side is going to be a short-term rental and the other side is going to be a traditional thing, that's, you know, it's not like 50% plus one. So I think it was just trying to make the argument, okay, you'll have a permanent owner occupied or a permanent leaseholder. And then let's say a person who owns a semi-detached or a duplex wants to rent the other half out of the short-term rental. I think that gives them the opportunity to do it because the person living there on a permanent basis for years or months or whatever, considered our definition of permanent, is still allowed to have this short-term rental that.
Okay.
Here she will run till the 30th. So that's my thought process, but it's odd. I agree. Because when I was writing it up, it was just, again, you're doing the math in your head. How is a two-family then considered secondary if it's half?
Well, the way this is, the way the zoning, proposed zoning ordinance is written, you got to get out of your head that this will even be a single-family because it's not allowed in any of the R zones. So I think you're right. I was just curious how you picked two-family.
Um, I think the primary concern I heard from the planning commission was that for single-family neighborhoods, being, I believe, the most stable, you know, you don't want to have a tight community, know your neighbors, big interaction. Once you start increasing the density, that still could occur. But I think you're probably more open to certain externalities, traffic, whatever, parking. So.
Okay. No, I'm.
And again, to me, also just to cover, because you're in my head, probably. Even though we're prohibiting it from the R1, it's very likely, and again, I don't know the number, that you would have single-family duplexes, whatever, as legal non-conforming buildings within the office zone. That's very likely as well. So in those situations, if it's a residential building, but in a commercial zone, they could have it, provided they adhere to the criteria. And if not, again, they could secretly through the VZA.
Okay. And just based on what we talked about last month in the meeting, some comments about taxation. Does that go in this ordinance, you think, or does it not?
Taxation would be a separate ordinance.
It would be a, okay, thank you.
So that would be more of a business license sort of issue.
Okay.
So we would be dealing just strictly with the zoning here.
Got it. Thank you. That'll be it, Mike. Thanks for doing this.
Additional questions for Mr. Skelly? Discussion? Mrs. Towne?
I'm sorry. From an interpretation to the building department on it, in the two sections we've been talking about, the short-term rental definition in some way implies that, well, it says the short-term rental property shall require the cohabitation of the property's lawful owner or permitted leaseholder who shall reside in the building a minimum of six months, which, when I read the first time, I thought, well, okay, if I am a snowbirder, then I can rent where I live the six months I'm not there. But then when you come over, and I also wonder about permitted leaseholders. So we're going to allow a leaseholder to rent it out as a short-term rental without, there's nowhere that says you have to have permission from the property owner. And from the building department standpoint, I find that left up to interpretation. But then over in Item A that Bernie was just talking about, you take single-family out of it. So that, to me, is a little bit of a confusion statement. Here it looks as if you could snowbird and rent a single-family, but here it's saying no.
Yeah, I guess the question, like, is a mouthful that you give me, but I'd say ideally, a single-family shouldn't be in that mix in terms of how it's written here. But if you had a single-family that you were living as the owner or occupant, whatever, and you wanted to rent it out for the months that you're not there, I think, again, that could be potentially something that VZA may consider. You know, depending on which zone you had, and if you had circumstances that would justify it. I don't know. That's something where, like I said, hopefully with the planning commission, the law department vetting it, just saying common sense, would this work or not? And again, would that be considered reasonable or not? I don't know.
Carrie, does it help? I know what you're saying, but to me, the reason I felt like this was okay was it's not even allowed in R1, R2, or R3, in RMX. Not even allowed.
I understand.
So you can't even be submitted.
But all of Ross and Carthage, our office in that one little L that gave us VZA so many problems years ago, they have lots of single families and two families in their office. So are they allowed in the single-family or are they not allowed in the single-family?
That is true, and we have that same situation on Laurel and Smith as well.
There are several places where we have lots of residential, but the forefathers thought it should move to office.
I would say for my part, I would be okay with those being, those single-family homes being able to host that short-term rental piece. When I kind of look at this, I think what the protection we're trying to do is about the neighborhood, not about the type of structure. So for me, it doesn't matter if it's a single-family home. It matters if it's in an R1, an R2, an R3, or an RMX. So the home that could be used for any other business occupation, you know, it could house a law firm, or it could house a bed and breakfast. It could house, you know, a number of different business opportunities. I see this as just a different type of business, and it'll all be permitted there. That would be my take on it. So I would make that change to this ordinance.
That it would include?
That single-family homes in the four zones permitted here, the O, the CBD, the MBD, and the GBD, it would be allowed.
Make sure I understand. So where Mike had it crossed out, it would now stay in.
Correct. Now, we would have to change some additional language on that because if it's a single-family home that's a short-term rental, obviously that can't be a secondary use. That is the primary use at that point. So we would need to do some modifications on Section A there. And I would leave it to Mike to kind of massage that language, figure out what's the best way to do that. The other comment I would have is on Section 2. Back to that onsite property manager, maintenance personnel, or the availability of the property maintenance personnel within the office within Hamilton County. I would lean more towards being okay with that as long as we've got that person who's responsible for the property in the county, someone who can be reached. For me, it doesn't necessarily have to be that property owner living in that parcel. So I would expand that out.
It would be something you would want on the application. Who's the contact? Who's my emergency?
Correct.
Contact.
Yeah. Mr. Skelly?
Yeah, maybe just to offer for the planning commission meeting, and again, one way, I'm again, highlighted, is also just saying, do we even need anything altogether to have that? Because that qualification is carried over in the criteria. So maybe for the short-term rental, we can just remove it from now, saying the short-term rental is basically, here is the people or how it's being operated, not necessarily who is operating it. Because if you take, let's say, other commercial activities, we don't specify for a retail or automotive garage or ice cream store, who's operating it.
Are you suggesting we would essentially remove everything in that paragraph after 30 days?
Well, for the definition where it says six months in any given calendar year period and everything that's highlighted, which is alternatively, you got to continue on, essentially that last entire sentence would be removed.
Wouldn't that restrict it further?
I don't know. It's.
I would suggest we remove everything after short-term, from short-term on, from the third line.
And make that part.
Just say, any residential dwelling unit, structure or property, or a mixed-use building which is advertised for let, rent, or use for transient occupancy by guests, travelers, or visitors for less than 30 days.
As a definition.
In the definition there.
And then move that other stuff into the process of how it's approved.
If we decide that we want that. I'm not sure that we need that. Thoughts on that?
I think you just added another sentence to what I was bringing up at the very beginning. So I think that, I think it's much clearer to enforce if you just leave that the way with the, you reduce from short-term on, taking all that out. I think it's easier for, to manage. I mean, it's a less than 30-day transient visit.
Well, this is the definition of short-term, and then how it's carried out and processed is in the meat of the, right?
So that would make this definition less about who is running the property or the location of the person running the property, and more about what the property is itself. Now, it does still restrict it to those four specific zones with the allowance in M1 and M2 as a PUD approval. So for me, that accomplishes the goal that I have of protecting our residential zones for residential purposes. Mr. Skelly?
One of the things, again, since we're talking about it, so the way it's written right here, and again, I think I was going to put in Option A, Option B. Sometimes that gets confusing. But since it's for discussion purposes, right now, in the commercial zones, the four ones that we have, the way I intend it, it's permitted subject to criteria or qualified use. Sometimes the language, how it's written here, is with regards to the conditional use. So the two options are, it's permitted outright subject to criteria X, Y, and Z. Option 2, we could just make where it says, under the O, Central Business District Neighborhood and the General Business District, a CU. So automatically would have to go to the VZA for their approval. So that's something you can think about as well, if we want to consider this further, as to do we just permit it outright subject to criteria? Or is it become a wholesale decision via the VZA? You know, it could come back to the VZA if a applicant may not adhere to the criteria to the letter of the law. They could ask for a leave. Mr. Sauer, see you kind of, her brow kind of.
I was hoping we'd have a tightened-up definition.
Yeah.
That everyone would not come back.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
Yeah, I'm just giving you different options because, like I say, it's something where.
I hate to see people go through an investment thinking that it can be approved. It just, that's what.
Correct. But I guess, you know, I'd like to say most common sense investors would buy property subject to, you know, like a 60 or a 90-day period where they could get its zoning really done. So they have an equitable interest in the property, but they're not the actual owner yet. And if the decision failed, so fine, they don't have to buy the property. Versus if we put permitted by criteria, and someone buys property, looks at the criteria, yeah, everything's going to work. I could adhere to it completely. They know they have that additional use option for their investment. Anyway, I just bring that up because again, even though we have one person in our audience and then probably other people listening, I can see later on, when it's supposed to counsel, there might be a lot more questions about these things. So I'd like to, you know, at least push it one way or the other right now that the planning commission can vet these sort of issues before it goes to counsel.
I would prefer to provide that certainty for a person purchasing that property rather than send them through another process. That's my thought.
So you're saying to put it all in here so they know when they read it?
I would keep it permitted subject to the criteria.
Because I do tell people a lot when they're buying properties to put it in your language, this is contingent upon approval. And that becomes a little bit sticky because they can't commit to buying it. They're contingent.
So the way it's written today, I'm trying to look forward to say, what would be those kind of things that would require it to come to VZA?
I want it in the R1 zone, and you say no.
Please.
I want it in the R1 zone, and they tell me no. We say no. I have to give them the opportunity to go to VZA.
Sure. They have that right.
Which is just a stepping stone to the court of common pleas because VZA, based on this, should not approve it. It's not allowed.
Very original conversations on this topic. We talked about, we already have a very strong bed and breakfast definition. So we're not, we're not changing things. What we're doing is saying, now we're adding a definition that's similar to a bed and breakfast. And to me, I think that, I, just having possible investors have to wait for a VZA meeting just on every single one of these, because that's what's going to happen. There's going to be two things. Either they want to put one in in a zone that's got an X in it, or two, they don't have any intent of having an owner live in the place. I mean, it's just not. It's an investment. So they're going to have, you know, property maintenance people kind of to carry the property. So I don't know. It doesn't seem like things that the VZA should have to deal with. That's just, that's one person's, mainly because I am the representative on VZA to put it away.
I agree with that. You know, if this is something, one of the criteria is one all-street parking space for each bedroom. So if somebody comes and wants to provide one parking space for two bedrooms, you know, I think that's the sort of thing that VZA should be able to say yes or no to pretty easily. Otherwise, I think we all spell the criteria pretty plainly and say. Otherwise, I, I think we ought to spell out the criteria pretty plainly, and say what's permitted and what's not, allow people to move forward from there.
Additional thoughts or comments for Mr. Skelly?
What does two-guest STR bedrooms may be permitted? Maximum of two guests?
Looking at item C on page three.
Sorry, what was it, C's? Two guests. Sorry, Eric, was there a question, or?
I don't, what does, so what does it mean when it says a maximum two-guest STR bedrooms may be permitted?
So within that structure, in those four zones, essentially, I'm calling it as short-term rental, a unit that contains, you know, a bedroom, or a bedroom with a living room, or whatever, and very likely, obviously, a kitchen. Later on, in the criteria, there's a proviso that only one kitchen for a short-term rental would be considered. So you really can only have two short-term rentals within the structure.
To me, it sounds like if I have a two-bedroom, I can only have four guests that I'm renting to in my short-term rental.
I guess the question is, how many of those bedrooms? Is it just two bedrooms with one kitchen?
I, I'm only asking about the two guests per bedroom.
Yeah, the guest is not the person, the guest is the unit.
So this, this would essentially allow each one of these buildings to have either a two-bedroom unit or two-one-bedroom units, potentially?
Yeah. Yeah. Anyways, circling back to, here's your question, you know, it would be easier to just say two short-term rentals.
I think that would be clearer, just to say two, two short-term rental units. As a productive comment, it's appreciated.
Okay. Any additional comments, questions, concerns? Mr. Skelly?
I, I guess my question is, how would you like to proceed, or would you guys like to discuss that first?
That was going to be my next topic. So would we like to review this again, have further discussion off an amended ordinance, or would we like to set a public hearing and get the amended ordinance simultaneously?
I think looking at a clean copy is important, I think, from my, I mean, I've taken comments that Mike, that we've heard, so whatever the best way to get that done. I don't know that there's any sense of urgency that just happens before the next meeting, but I think something that could be distributed prior to the next meeting, that we could come with our last final comments.
That's my preference as well, and I'd also like to circulate it to the various city departments that you might have to provide. Like, oh, again, my preference is, you know, this maybe could be controversial, so why not tease out some of those comments early?
I agree.
Chairman Powers, appropriate to allow these levels, just to say something, she's been sitting here patiently? Is it appropriate to do that, or do we need to wait?
We would need to wait for a public hearing, although if you, if you'd like to talk after the meeting with me personally, I'd be happy to talk with you at that point. So we will ask Mr. Skelly to prepare a modified copy of this for our next meeting. We'll have further discussion at that point, and then likely set a public hearing for the meeting following. Generally, consensus with that?
Okay.
Great. All right. That concludes item E1, old business. Any other discussion? Hearing none? Offer a motion?
Noah, did we address Dan Bligh's comment?
I believe-
Just, it was in our packet, I didn't-
I believe Mr. Skelly touched briefly on the kitchen.
Oh, okay. You and Dan worked that out?
I, I didn't talk to Dan further, at least I kind of understands his comments, but like, I think at the same time, it'll be circulated again, so if he wants to tease out the concern one way or the other, that's helpful, or maybe it was just more for clarification.
Think that's something that you can, you can do between now and in our next meeting, and including changes in the-
Do you think it means one kitchen per, per unit?
My interpretation is that each short-term rental would have one kitchen.
So you can't rent just a bedroom? Have to rent access to a kitchen?
And I think Dan might be saying, maybe we should just add, make that a little tighter.
Sure.
You've answered how I was hoping it would, so, as far as the kitchen, and you can't rent bedrooms.
Anything further? I'll, I'll offer a motion to excuse Mayor Schneider. Do I have a second? Mrs. Towns, please call the roll.
Chairman Powers?
Yes?
Mrs. Sickinger?
Yes.
Mr. Hockney?
Yes.
Mr. Sauer?
Yes.
And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
To move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We're going to give it to Tom.
You'll give it to your word.
Chairman Powers?
Yes.
Mrs. Sickinger?
Yes.
Mr. Hockney?
Yes.
Mr. Sauer?
Yes.
They are now adjourned at 4:08. Thank you, everyone, for your time today.